All right, this is our little Cleveland County Work Session. And we'll say a little prayer, thank you God for all your blessings. We thank you to be for that. We ask you for all your wisdom and making good decisions and choosing things that we should, we need to vote on to help our county and to help our citizens. I guess after this is easy as that, amen. All right. Lisa, it's your turn. Go ahead, Lisa, what you got for us?
I guess everyone has had a chance to look at what the IAC has done. You know, how we're on the ARPA money. I don't know if you guys have all looked at it or not, but the IAC has come out with their description of what the new rule, the final rule is on the ARPA money. And it looks like things are going to be easier from here on out. If you, if a county gets less than $10 billion, they can actually allocate that money to revenue replacement without any further calculating or anything like that. And they say that if there's an established need in the county that the government, that the county government would normally provide to the county, then those items will likely be covered. I'm talking about streets and bridges and whatever at this point. So they will be having meetings with each county to discuss any questions they have about the expenditures of this money. But there will be, there's three dates that they have available that they will actually do like a virtual meeting so that you can do a question and answer. The IAC. The IAC is actually having these meetings because even though they've put a video out, and I sent you guys the link to that, and a slideshow out, there's still going to be individual questions because every county is different and what they, what they need is different. So they are encouraging everyone to try to attend at least one of these meetings to get this information. Their dates that are available are February 16th, 17th, and 18th. And they will do them virtually, so, yeah.
But those are all about a week for me. I'll be in the country that way.
Okay. Well... And still, you know, even if you were uninvited, you might have questions that, you know, we could pass on. Whoever is able to attend the meeting could certainly ask some questions about it. But I think it'll be the best way to actually get the information that you need about what projects you may have in mind that can, the ARPA money can be spent on.
And that's the money, how much of that money have we already got?
We've gotten 1.4 so far. We've got half of it.
Half of it, so we're going to get that much more?
Yes. It was 2.89 million and we've got 1.44, something like that in our account right now. And of course, 700,000 is already earmarked for water projects, you know, and they're working on the paperwork with, for that right now to get approval on some of those projects right now, so. But they did say that the whole process is more streamlined, that it will be easier to get approved for the projects and a quicker setup.
Do the qualifications getting the approval number?
The IAC. They have their own professionals that will, like Lobella is one of their folks that actually will approve their water projects. But I think, you know, of course it has to be bid out, all the regular hoops that you have to jump through with any kind of moves like that, but you at least have to go through the same, the same steps, but they say that the approval process is easier as they have eased up on some of the restrictions. You know, before they were saying no roads, no bridges, but now they're, they're saying that those are possibilities now.
Okay.
That's the biggest thing that I needed to tell you about. Also, the Sheriff's Department has sent me a letter that has some items that are surplus vehicles that they would like to, to, let's see, one of them is for vehicles that are no longer being used and are inoperable. And they want to surplus those, list of vehicles to be auctioned. And then the others are some that have been seized. So if you guys want to put down a consent agenda, they're asking for that.
Or does the Sheriff Department handle it, or our company or other work?
Usually, unless Lee gets involved, they've been just having, you all are right across the street there, just pull them all over there. And, but then it was, you know, when Shannon was here, it was Shannon interrupting and the police, the Sheriff's Department was just having everything they had out there in a big circle, the Muslim company. But they, they scouted coming auctioning all right in place and they'd haul it off and everything. At that, I know at, early times, when I first come in office, they had some big sales all around and then, and then other people were bringing stuff and, you know, they just, I signed. Then that company would come in and anybody else went and bring cars, but you remember coming in? I mean, they had something, I bought a generator as well to work for.
It doesn't really say on here, but this and the seized ones.
It was pretty good, that whole field, it should have been.
Some of the money will go to Sheriff's Drift Fund and 10% to the...
How many vehicles did you have?
Six on the surplus and then six more on the seized ones.
So is everybody good with the consent yet?
I'm good. I would like to know if the deal price don't happen, but yeah, ten minutes, I mean, once we get them.
Lane's here, do you know Lane?
I don't know, but I think that probably since that's all we have, probably my lead on that website or whatever, I don't know. It's been so long since we've had one.
Well, that, uh, that company used to do it, Lane.
How about Jill Robinson?
Robinson, I think that's good. It makes like share of everything, you know?
Jill Robinson.
Yeah.
The stipulations on some of that stuff, especially like the seed, you get a lot of times have to bring and frame and back and strip it and you just have to scrap it.
But somebody who might take ownership, though, we can't just let people come up our guessing. I don't know how you do it, but you have the company to do it.
That's why, that's pretty nice.
I just figured as soon as they had to do it.
So can we, we'll try to communicate and ask the sheriff or Paul or our line to kind of explain exactly what the coins are?
While that money goes up or, it don't all come with the sheriff. Those drug, drug money is good.
What? It does say on the seized vehicles that 90% of the money would go to the Cleveland County Sheriff's Department Drug Fund and 10% to the Cleveland County District Return 's Office.
With the red flag, can you mention what?
The vehicle that belongs to the county could come back to the county.
Right. Yeah, see, if you go to the meetings in there, there's a non-occupational.
Well, if they're not human, this a lot of powerful around that.
Okay, you have anything else?
I have had it brought up about the restrictions on traveling to meetings. I do know that we have it in our budget that there's only specific meetings that folks are allowed to attend. It sort of leaves the elected officials and department heads out of that because things do come up. But I've had it asked, there's an ethics class next month. I know that Emily Brown's interested in going to that. She's had ethics training in the past, but she said it's been a lot of years that she's been trained on that. And I don't know if you make exceptions for, for whatever you think, but Lee's also asked about one and I don't know if Deanne's interested in going to the ethics training, she may be also, I don't, I don't know, but...
How do we handle, we need a motion just to...
I, I have, especially when you have always talked to people that are dealing with, it really needs to go to the, that's...
So if you just come up with a, I mean, the first one, I guess is Emily, but if anybody asks us to go, we just go by per, per person? Okay? So Emily, you start with Emily Brown?
Do we have the money to do that in the budget or we don't have it?
Well, it's, it's not a very expensive, it's one night overnight and it's $185 for the class, so I don't think that it's going to be a budget breaker. I don't think that it was specifically laid out in there, but I don't think it's going to be one that's going to get us.
Okay, same, same to do it?
Yes.
Okay. Is that all we have? Anybody have any questions for Lisa?
Do you want to talk about your travel?
That's what I'm saying, is that just for one?
That was just for the ethics meeting.
We need to put one on line two.
I was going to try to get, see if I can get to him to go to meetings at the engineers department, I think that's what I was going to ask for.
Okay. So that, yeah. I think that's probably, do a separate resolution or we can add them, you don't have. Everybody will carry that and release requests on to that.
This is the two resolutions for the, you know...
Questions?
Because your question comes out of your budget, right?
Okay? Separate resolution recommended by Mr. Hendricks, that's good. All right, also, I would say to get signed, if y'all might saw Emily Brown's office to, to give as an award to Rosheal Osmond next week. I'm not, I'm going to be out of town, so my wife's in worship.
Your wife's?
And so I talked to Terry and he said, that she's supposed to be here and I told Special Division, she's supposed to be here. So...
You want to be here in minutes?
Oh, I know, I know. So, you have anything?
I do have one, but I need to get the PO for IBM Solutions to do the per site application. 14,680.
So PO for that, good on consenting?
14,680.
14,680? But it's needed, it has to be done, right?
My opinion is.
Consent is good, all right. Okay, anything else?
That's all there is.
Hey, I have some questions.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, let me, uh...
The, the worship, they talked to us about that. Have you heard anything back from that?
I haven't heard anything else back from that. I did, so what he referred to is the, the Coos Valley RCD bunch at our house, sent me a letter asking if we were going to sign on to the mode. And I sent, sent a letter back saying that we was not going to be doing any further maintenance with the worship. And so that made my building pretty quick. I got a call from a, Mr. Bill Smith, from Montgomery. He claims that he has the contracts and the documents to say we're supposed to be in the town. He was going to properly email them to me two weeks ago and I hadn't seen him yet and...
But wouldn't that affect your contract or something?
Most of them was...
Well, maybe he has the contract, we may just say, how long my contract?
Well, I told him I needed to see.
Yeah.
He claims he has them, said he's going to email them, I haven't seen him, I ain't heard anything else out of it.
They said it's out, they did, they, they are doing the worship, it's totally...
But not hurt, but they just, that they're going to do it?
They just come for you and finish cutting it.
Yeah, they have that 16, they have one, we did.
I'm just saying, you know, that, because I think everyone's in doubt, who owns on, we don't want to claim ownership and they don't need it, but they're still cutting it.
This guy here talking to, probably one of the ones that wouldn't show up in Montgomery for the people. Well, probably might have been up there talking to us, so long as he don't come back for a lot of terms, don't worry about it. Just don't worry about me getting worried.
They obviously do, you know, they've bought the equipment, I think that's why they're concerned, because they've got that equipment sitting there that they purchased.
Yeah, they got paid for it.
They got paid for it and it's not being used.
You know, they don't most of the paper in the US?
No, they just was asking about the cutting and I told them it was a legal issue that, you know, we don't want that ownership of the, what we discussed here, that we don't want that ownership of the worship.
We're the biggest part of that, of their contract, that 16 and everybody else is hard to do.
Yeah.
We're just a big chunk of that, so...
You have questions for Lee?
Uh, did you hear anything back about Waste Management? I did not.
I ain't got any, no, no resolutions on anything, we're just sending emails with problems and...
Here's my bill right there, that's what they sent me, they tried to go $8 or something on my bill.
Yeah, I'll be acknowledging people that there are certain clients that, um, the government, now, so they're still trying to charge $8 to pay you real money.
Do you want this here to go to him?
No, I just...
You want to change the house?
The, so, so here's what I have heard, the, the $8, so it's free to pay on the line, it's $8 to pay by phone. So I called, said, nothing in contract about them having to charge $8 for phone fees. The response I got was, well, there's nothing in the contract that says we have to pay the phone fees. And I told them that I'd be back in touch with them on, on the answer to that. So that's kind of a yes and no at the moment as to whether or not the phone fees would cost extra or not. And then the, just the price increase was not on their bill, it was just on, it was just on, it was just scrapped, just every once in a while they're out there and there's one at the, at the dish one, of course. So that, that had to match, I think, seems like it would be on everyone if it was, so they were just trying to get the bottom of that, so...
I just want to go back to one other thing about these dams. I know you don't want to try to maintain them, but what I would like to know is, if even we got to go get that contract and look at it, I don't want to wait till it gets up three times our head height and try to go over and maintain it, and we got trees going over, maybe, but we went through that at Landville, I know.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying, but you can't use the contract, what are you going to do?
I'm just saying, it ain't going to matter, they come in and it is our responsibility, the guy called and said, well, I called and told them it's our responsibility, I have the contract. I would suggest even we got to go a little bit further to find out. I just don't want it to turn into, well, we got to go over our, rent, service, with it to stay over there and cut down the border for reeds.
Where's your office at, Lee?
He's, it's 334, I just assumed it was out of Montgomery, so...
I mean, I have a problem with that.
I don't either, I mean, we're going to be heading down the way.
If you didn't fill in the contract that the date is 2022, then throw it on the market. We don't, we don't have the means of how long it's going to take at some point to fix what they say has got to be fixed, and we have no say so then. I mean, that's the deal, and that's the reason they don't want to come to play with the contract. The fact they don't like all the seeds is we got to pay all the money.
Well, to kind of answer your question, I agree, you wait three years, you don't have those trees. We did get everything this past year, it was cut in office.
Okay. But I, I just say, we haven't been maintaining it. I know what it's like after three, four years sitting there and all of a sudden we got to go over and be just friendly with it.
Everything was cut, everything was cut this year, so...
And how long does it take you to cut those, those 16 yards?
Um, well, it takes them, RCD actually does it partially. It takes about 12 days and about $1,800, I mean, $18,000 is about what it...
So we're looking at $18,000 just, just to keep it cut? What about all that stuff about cleaning out the rest of the, the...
It's all additional.
Yeah.
So if it's something that we can go do, we've done it in the past, but if it's much more than pulling a few logs out of it, then you look at contracts and everything else to get something to go right quick.
The other thing I seen from the one in Sweetwater is a chain saw, go up there and pull so much stuff out of the drain, you know, it's just sort of wedged in the metal.
Yep, and that's what we've been doing, but...
And probably try to see if they let you take a little 410 reed, that place is packed full of watermarks, about twice as many snakes, let's do it, like, oh. Okay.
The meeting, the very first meeting that I was at was, they had a guy that was, has been banned coming back to any meetings from understanding because he gave us too much information. This guy was talking about $100 million. I mean, he was talking about drainage, this, like, he was talking about then new drains, rebuilding dams. I mean, we got 16 of them? You don't want my ownership of them?
And the guy, Bill, he did say that part of the contracts didn't, didn't give us access to some federal monies, but it was on a 65/35 basis, so...
Like that watershed right below my house there, it's 40 something acres. It did maybe cost the reeds, but, I mean, he was talking 30, 40 million dollars. The king of all that. And we don't even mind, we don't know that, and we just got a right way to go with the thing. It's all the county's got. Or an easement, you know, right, just have it, so...
I still like to see a contract, just so I know what my obligation is.
I would love to see a contract too, and I would ask two, three different people, Sonny, even Sonny in the ACCA, call them up and try to help me, nobody should ever come in.
Do you want me to contact them back?
I'm, I'm driving there, I'm, you know, I'd like to settle the...
Well, he told you he had the contract.
Says he has.
Because at that point, we might as well go ahead and explain to them what our county can afford us to do, and that's basically, that's grass. And we're both far removed from that.
He got a contract, he did, he done send it. That was, that was, which Lee brought up, I'm going to talk about this better next time. There was a lady, I think she came to Carolina County from Montgomery, and she had all the contracts for everybody, she was going, would y'all sign this, would y'all sign this? And the way I understood it was, when somebody asked a question, she said, it's not my job to answer questions, it's my job to get your signature. Which I was telling, nobody signed it.
Well, like, you can sign, you can sign a contract for a family, I mean, sure.
I'm just telling you that, what's going on on the...
They're, they're trying to get a sign of the contract.
Okay.
Yeah, do you want to contact them? If somebody else wants to go, I'll go, there's no problem, we don't think they'll pull $18.
You have questions?
Wait, I know you and I would talked just recently about the homicide, you know, and I know we're in question about, you know, what's, how it is and what's not. I want to put a resolution on top of, to just not sway my area, a resolution back on the head of, of just not sway my area. And that way we're not in doubt and you don't have to question.
So Ms. Cobb, you want a clear resolution?
Yes, that's right.
Can y'all put down your business or...
I have to set the guess, what's the high risk area and what's not.
I think to keep the confusion, I think this is where I'm in business.
That's all.
Okay, am I giving that?
How are we going to do the cutting? Or do you want maintenance or you just want to give the cutting in your history?
You give the cutting, you don't want to do it. I'm going on the cutting and I'm, I'm going on with it.
Okay, y'all work on resolution, put down on your business.
I just, we, I sort of, we sort of got cut off on my Waste Management deal. Hasn't been going on. Do we not have, in our contract, they have a $100 penalty for gardens came and they don't pick it up?
They do, and that was part of my discussion on the whole phone bill was...
I mean, if they, if they can't straighten this stuff out, I mean, if they can't get the gardens picked up, I'll volunteer right behind the truck and we'll send them a baby.
We, we had that conversation just today or something, yeah. I asked one, wait, when we respond.
I keep missing the signing, I think we waited.
What do you think, how much more time is on this contract?
2023, we got it next fall.
So what I'm saying is, it sounds like the trash business is held apart. What do you think we're going to be looking at when this thing's put up to bed again?
I think, I think with 60 plus.
That's what I think. Because in Atlanta, I mean, just in Georgia right now, it's like we got to schedule just to get a pickup, a dumpster, you have, if you don't get at least 30 to 60 days, and last time it was 90 days, because the new engineering, I mean, you're supposed to schedule getting a dumpster. And I talked to Waste Management over there, and I mean, they're doing signing bonuses and they're trying to get dump truck drivers or trash truck drivers and they can't do it.
I mean, this last contract, other than the maintenance, this $47 price, it was all $56 and $58 already, you know, back in 2020.
I'm just saying, I, I know, and, and it seems like the other companies are buying the other companies now, and for them to pick up, last time they picked up the dumpster in the land, it cost them about $4,700. They took out the whole gate and all, all the bins and ended up, that guy, he couldn't back it through, he just took it all out.
I noticed today, the Patriots in town, with the Patriots ways, I've never heard of them, but I noticed they're pretty nice trucks, so I'm going to make sure that we, if we make them in the out of town, maybe when we're being out that we notify them.
Was it a residential truck?
This, it was.
Was it a residential truck?
Yeah, it was a residential truck. It was called Patriot.
Do we need...
It was going into the waste area.
Into their land there? Into their land there? A lot of times it's crossed from Georgia to Alabama land, or it usually becomes a problem for them.
Do we need to sort of look at other options? Carol County, don't think, gardens we got, Carol County just has spacers.
They have what?
They have spacers in the district, and you just go take your gardens. I mean, I'm not saying that's an answer, but I mean, we can start looking at some way else, because people, I think, probably can't afford it, is that if the next contract comes back, 65, and more likely it will, or more. We need, I mean, you know, you can't do this, this will turn out and do something different, you got to throw a plan ahead, we need to look at different options.
From, from time we signed the contract, DHL was what, $235, and it's $4 now, thanks to our new administration, I'm watching this, so...
And the spacers run over 70% now around, so beside the legal appeal, everyone else is going to have police, but with that...
They haven't said anything about a surcharge or anything on the deal, they usually, they, I mean, they used to pick up on that, by the way.
He was talking about those don't decide, House County did it for a while and it was a not my fault.
I don't have Carol County listed, Carol County been in for years.
Yeah, House County, you just had, had dumpsters.
On our, on our state, or did you...
In the maiden experience, because they're a lot of my mom knows, they've experienced a lot of...
I was wondering if we get to talk to her, just like, uh, along with them, to see what kind of deal could we get for their trash.
At first, they did, they did.
To see if they're running a town, I mean, that's a town service, right?
But that, that might not be that much, so then we need to start to look at...
Absolutely, well, yeah.
Some of these other contractors, you might have to have some...
It's usually, it's usually, I think it usually runs about 50, 50 percent. I would, I'd love to find out, but...
What you're saying, planning ahead, makes sense, if, if we had a move or something like that, and then, then planning ahead, how actually, how, how would you, I mean, how are you going to charge and then...
Once we open up these contracts, we ain't going to have time to do anything. When you open up these contracts, you don't have to pick them up and say, here you go, no matter if the citizens like it or not. So we might need to have a couple of them.
I think it's wise.
I mean, I don't want to resent the law, because I think it's a good thing for three of your county, but we might need to make some changes.
Well, another, another idea is, and I suppose, but, you know, we don't have a meeting, we have to take it somewhere else, but it's, I'm just saying, this is an idea, I don't know if that's a good idea, don't mean it's a good idea. If you need your own county to do it, ran out of county to do it for a while, you know?
They, they do, but they don't tell you not to.
Really?
We did the commission job talk, so you have the money.
They do, huh?
Well, I said, I mean, that's a good idea, so I, you know.
Maybe, I mean, we all talk to every commissioner from different parts of the state, I know, but maybe we just need to see what everybody else is doing.
Maybe some of us.
Yeah, so guessing how they.
Well, one, one thing, if you, if, you know, we, men lead, and I know I talked to Robbie about this. Uh, you know, usually it's about how many people's in a certain area as far as driving that in the car. And I, and I talked to Robbie about it back when they were getting ready for their contract, and tried to tie the city of Heaven in with the, uh, cause this I had it for the city of Heaven too, but cause their trash cans are so condensed. Uh, you know, I mean, you just go bam, 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 you're making money, where you got to drive up there. And, you know, and I, I brought this up several times through other mayors, Robbie's on, and really entertained that he would be willing to do something. You know, if, if it was good for them, good for us, because what I was saying, I said, well, if y'all join hands with us, you have a convenience center that you can use. And the citizens that I talked to in my district, because I've been talking to this for a while, when they got to the convenience center, I get a lot of people. And they say, I say, well, this is how much it is, you know, they'll look at it and say twenty-five or thirty dollar lot, and say, well, that's great. And, uh, but, you know, I think that would help the county a lot, if you get the city of Heaven on board, to where we could pick up those residents. Where when we come in and we do a cross-the-board bid, that would give us another, uh, sixteen hundred trash cans or something like that, something sixteen to two thousand.
Well, they can do this, they've got more than one, can't they? They love it, and they do three, so it's a lot.
I have to still use the wires, but they're so small, like. And I'm trying to live, since they're down there, but they are cheap.
It's something that you think about, because they're bigger for you. And as far as.
I just had to make sure that I start working on the contracts.
So do you think, how, how many, how much do you think that that would have, if we could get the city of Heaven on board with us?
I mean, I've always, advance has always told me, and the number was a hundred and fifty-five thousand, because a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from a clean tank, whether it's one tank or whatever. So they take how many residents or how many cans they got, divide it by one fifty-five, and that's worth a forty-seven dollar quarter.
So, so if you had that, meaning more?
It drives the price up.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. That's what, that's what it is to count, and it makes a lot more, and so condensed, you know?
So the last time, that's how it's figured, there's no surprise, and they just buy another number of units.
They're putting their small trucks out on coming in the week, so.
Well, they're running two and three trucks, so I don't just.
See, they switched the days up too, like, they, they switch everybody's days up, and nobody knows now when the cans are supposed to be sent to weather out, which is what they told me. To let them know by then, your day has been changed, but they have.
Well, they really haven't changed, but they haven't changed these days officially, but when, they've got, like I said, they got two and three trucks running it. And they're just grabbing as much as they can grab for, 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 trying to get it, can't do it.
In border springs, they're running that little truck now, on the small, and they've changed their days.
Okay, the little trucks are, the little trucks are different.
Yeah, they, that's, that's the first one they got out, so it's that smaller, and it's up to the border springs, and it's totally got everybody confused up there, because of the data change.
All right, moving on?
Moving on.
Ms. Kristin?
Okay, so, um. We.
Come on, hold you, I know you're gonna have to.
We met with, um, our radio manager. On the nine-one-one side, and our radio consoles in our center that communicate with every single responder in the county are outdated. And their, the equipment lifecycle came to an end about three years ago, so we are at a critical point. Where we are going to have to start trying to find some of the four replacements for our radio consoles. So, uh, at this point, we have four consoles in the center, we have three nine-one-one consoles, and then a radio console in the E O C. Um, for events and things like that. So, really, to put into perspective is that software for our center, uh, and then we have five that are running to the commo building. The guts per se at the commo building, the repeaters, the base units, all of that is outdated. So, I met with Chris about a minute before our communication, um, today, and we went through the commo building as well as the center, and really talked about what options we have, what we'd be looking at, and of course, he's gonna get back to me on the price. So, last year, I did apply for a grant with the state number one more for, um, the new consoles, um, that totaled two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um, I got mine, of course, but we tried. So, talking with Chris today, I just told him, we're gonna try to do best, I mean, the cheapest way we can get by with it to see that we can do it in a phased, a phased approach. So that when we, um, replace equipment in the commo building, it may be that I can apply for another grant for the state for the consoles in the center. So we're gonna try to phase it, but just kind of an F I I, that's what we're looking at dealing with. And so, of course, the nine, uh, the nine-one-one center, um, holds all the communication for, again, every single responder, fire departments, law, and D M S. We hold all their repeaters, we maintain some of those, and we have our site locations. So our site location for our center is the commo building, up at the old, um, up at our old building. We have the Turkey Heaven site, you know, Oak Grove site, we have a repeater on Chi Hall, and we have the Dorban site, so we have four title locations, um, other than our commo building. We do pay power bills, and we do maintain, with the exception of Chi Hall, we do maintain, um, the rest of this and pay power bills on those. So, now I'm just sort of shorting, talking about all of that. What I'm going to ask for tonight is, um, our Turkey Heaven location, um, holds seven, I'd say about eighty-five percent of the communication for the county. Um, Turkey Heaven site, um, houses the repeaters for the sheriff's department, D M S, um, random Turkey Heaven, and ask on the fire departments. So, if we have power loss, or power outages, or something happens with the Turkey Heaven, um, site, then we have no communication, we have to go to our backup communication. So, we have a generator, gentleman that comes out and services our generator, which is fantastic. But the simple fact is, is that the generator is outdated. Um, and the last several times we've had events, um, either myself and my husband go up to manually start the generator, uh, Chief Nolan has went up to start the generator for us. And Tracy has helped us, he lives right up nearby, so sometimes he has to start the generator manually. Um, and our generator guy just says it's just outdated, it's probably, at this point, I'd say about fifteen years old. Um, it's a propane generator, and we identified from rent to replace it, too, the cost of it is thirty-five hundred dollars. So this last time, um, we had a little bit of weather come through, we went down, we were down for probably one, thirteen hours. Um, without power, of course, we had a backup solution, but we don't buy together our backup solution, we wanted to run seamlessly. So, if you recall, we, uh, we discussed and asked for a, um, a budget increase for the E O C T Vs that we, that we replaced with, uh, some additional funding that we got from the state board. Um, legacy reimbursements are what they're called, so it is just a charge on your phone bill that we have gotten back due to the engine project. We're going to get that for another year, and this past time, we got about eleven thousand dollars extra funds that we hadn't anticipated at all. Those will go away when they just start our phone bills, but, um, we got eleven thousand dollars minus the four that we replaced the E O C T Vs with, or radio TVs. And, um, we will get another eleven thousand dollars this year, we just submit for reimbursements. So, with a little bit left of the funding that we got this year, I'm asking for a budget increase to replace the generator as the first act of replacing equipment on Turkey Heaven.
Just the one?
Just the one for right now. Um, like I said, other communication is gonna get back with me. We discussed several options on how to cut down costs on the equipment that we have. Um, some of it, we are going to house and hold until our equipment, um, breaks, and we're gonna replace that as it comes. Um, so, like I said, we're gonna probably do a three-phase approach, but we'll present all of that to you guys, to try to see if we can get any kind of grant funds. But it is on the horizon, and they are having trouble finding replacement parts, they're, they cannot be sold, he said you can't buy them on eBay anymore. And so we are at the mercy of getting, um, gateways, repeater parts, things like that, from, um, surrounding counties that have replaced, um, those pieces of equipment, so.
Did you say thirty-five hundred, thirty-five thousand?
Thirty-five hundred, yes, thirty-five hundred, um, and, like I said, I got that quote back in probably June or July, so it's most likely around four at this point, but I'll get that updated quote. Another issue that they're having, that he was discussing with me today, is that, um, the simplest of even base units or radios, he said that they order a critical base unit that they needed at another county, um, about eight months ago, they just got it. So, he said that's another issue too, is just the supply chain is so slow, um, to get things and replace things, so. He said it's on the horizon, and I completely agree, um, we're gonna get a plan of action in place, and then we'll come and discuss it with you guys. It's, um, gonna be a major overhaul, and an expensive one. Um, but, our critical infrastructure that we have now was set up so that it works great for us, and it's just replacing that equipment in it. We don't have to build any more title locations, nothing like that, it's just replacing the hardware that is inside the buildings, so. Hopefully, we can, like I said, find some right money to assist with that.
So, so this is the part of the two thirty, or the two thirty-eight, you said?
The replacement of just our radio consoles and the.
Here or?
Yes, here, our radio consoles here, and some of the equipment in the commo building was around two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So.
Why don't you go with some money to open up this equipment?
We did, we sure did, we have, we have, we have a large batch amount in our, um, mountain account, so. And we, we hold it for days like this, when we're almost to the point where we're in no return. Um, I am trying to work a deal in with them, um, to put a backup center at the fire, I've spoken with Chief Addings about that. And it will not only help us out, but it'll help them out too, and because they'll be able to use some of the antennas and the base radios that we'll have to put there. So, we need, if we have, um, something happen to the mountain center, the sewer tract, uh, these turbines that goes on fire or on fire, whatever, like a water train that come through. Um, we would be able to move down to pet the fire and these things, but right back there, we will communicate, as long as nothing happens to our, our building at that time, I'm sure, so.
Is there any way you can put up this center proposal, step one, step two, so we can locate it and other?
Yes, we will, he is working on that now, uh, but I had hopes, and I, and that was just kind of a, just a on the horizon deal. He said it would probably take another month or so to get the proposal together, make sure the equipment was still installed, that kind of thing too, but the immediate need is the generator at Turkey Heaven, and so I just felt like it would be a good use of the funds, we didn't know we were getting those anyways, and it is a headache.
So you're getting a weapon value, you said a weapon value?
We got eleven thousand and two hundred and fifty dollars, but we spent forty-four hundred on the E O C T Vs, so we still have about sixty-eight hundred dollars that we weren't even expecting.
Well.
So you got enough to cover this generator?
Yes.
Which is another generator that's supposed to cover for you. Does that say the same old generator or something?
It is, it's the generator that are at all the locations. Now, I will tell you that we probably need to use some of this, these ones to, to put propane tanks, we'll need to load, especially at truck cabin and commo building, and I think Oak Grove is even lower than those, so propane is ridiculous expensive, so that'll probably four, five thousand dollars to take stock.
A lot of times, it's best to get by, still, in the summertime.
Yeah. So I felt like that we, um, would probably be the most critical, I think, and he said, he just checked them last week, and Oak Grove's at twenty percent, so we'll probably put some in and try to wait as long as we can, I might have to get a better, better rate at it. But we do use wirelesses, and they do do testing also, so.
So is it, do you need, you think budget modification or anything?
At this point, probably a budget modification, or it'd be forty, four hundred for the E O C, because we were just gonna wait on that to see if our budget can absorb that.
Do y'all wanna do that, y'all wait till later in summer or what?
I mean, we're to leave money in one line, and then to another line, I would, I suppose, do it now, but. I bet that's what you're after.
Which, it's not in the budget at all, um, neither of these thoughts were, we didn't even know we were gonna get this, the eleven thousand dollars, so we didn't even include anything, so it's just kind of an on-top and extra addition to the budget.
If y'all can work out something, so you can know the white line of where this be coming from, and we'll fix up a resolution? Is everybody knew that, man, or?
You got a town, or you got eleven thousand dollars, and then we deliver it.
Right, and I would be a, that big proposal, if he can get anyone on that generac, he did lower the wattage on the generac, uh, generator. He said that it really didn't need that big of a generator, it saved us a bunch of fuel. He did lower the wattage on it, which saved us a lot, and so I'm thinking a lot for that, so we'll get that big proposal, and I'll get the person to get the numbers out.
If you would take, take the quote you're getting from your guy, and put your opinion in there of what you need and what you can give out of that. And, and sort of make it look, you know, like, this is something he's done this year, this is something he's done next year, and so on, so we can have it in front of us.
So on that, we discussed with him, he is, um, he is concerned about the equipment in the title locations, we are more concerned about radio consoles in the center. So we're kind of working that through. Once we get some of the larger pieces of equipment, the repeaters replaced, we'll have enough equipment, so I'm feeling like we can wait on some of the commo building, uh, and get our, because it's our computers as well, our computers are so outdated, they don't run Windows ten. They can't replace the software updates, things like that, so we're already down with the computers in the back, we can't update at all, because it's running X P, and we're not it's not compatible with Windows, but anyways, yes, I will get that all, this is, we'll do a phased approach. Um, and I may even have him include it all in a different proposal, and see how much, just an overhaul, how much we're looking at.
How much trouble would it be to do a five-year plan on what you see coming up in the next five years, so we can sort of have it up? Um, include all this stuff in it, and, you know, break it down, what you got to have, and what you can put off.
It, it won't be hard at all, um, because at some point, we're gonna have to climb the towers as well, we're gonna have to climb each tower. And we have, we have had local communication out, the guys from Birmingham had to climb the tower, looking at antenna for the city of Heaven. It's fifteen hundred dollars off the back for them just to even mess with it. Not to mention if something's wrong with their cable in the antennas or anything, but yes, we can do that.
And get out of climate, see the one that actually works on it, or see that it's raining down, they work on it.
These are the reports back, and they do fix it, but they climb it, figure out the problem, and of course, they have to work, so they'll have to climb it again. But I think they, I do think that they consider that, and they overall totally, you know, I don't think they're charging you each time, but initially, each.
I know we've got a local company that, that does that too, not for what you're talking about, they do it for home equipment. But if you could get us a five-year proposal, I think that's a good.
Okay, yeah, I'll want that, definitely.
All right, so give me the proposal, but it needs someone to take care of your generator, right? So y'all need to get contingent on that, or maybe it's, I'm gonna be, contingent. Why don't you do everything for us, cheers, all right?
Now, how do you take policies that are going to be optional online? Go with options up?
They're gonna do it online, well, how do they do the responsibility of framing the frames and stuff, but who's gonna be negotiating all that?
I don't know, you have to talk with the, come to John and the chair, or Patrick. Patrick is a lot of, it's on this website, and five of them.
That process, there, feel like a manual thing, you can, you can drive it.
Yeah.
If there were, if there are.
Most of all, there, it's just, well, it's easy. Yeah.
I don't matter what they say, I just like the process. I don't matter what they say, I just like the process before we go.
I just don't want to be paying for somebody to be here or what they're going to sue us for.
Yeah.
Um, y'all, this, this side of the building is, we, we own the building, but J S U has control. Um, a nonprofit church has worked out an agreement, they're going to start meeting here every Sunday. They worked out an agreement with, uh, J S U. So I think, uh, it's Cody Shelton, his, his mom, of course, works for J S U. And Cody's my son-in-law, but they're going to start meeting here every Sunday, but they worked out an agreement.
But you got the place to turn around for liability cleanup and all that?
Yeah, I think according to J S U, I don't know all the details, but they're out of that, but just want to give y'all a heads up. I think Fred, you're aware.
Okay.
Yeah. But, uh, I think it's their goal is to leave it as better than, than what, what it is, so.
Is this a temporary deal?
I think, uh, it's temporary, but I, I think it maybe, I think the plan is maybe for more than a year, so.
Um. We, we don't have, I mean, I was ever sent a J S U contract. We don't have any, anything in the contract saying that we have final say or.
No, whatever they want.
Make it whatever they want.
Well, they're supposed to charge and the money is going to them, it's the way it was set up. And then, uh, our obligation is to.
But you're responsible for maintenance and cleaning, isn't it?
Some of it's. Well, I mean, right now, to thank by all the years that this thing's sitting here, if they were having classes in here, we was responsible for cleaning, for keeping the trash in full, for, I mean, general maintenance, I mean, they didn't hear how, you know, we need to clean up there behind us.
I'm just like, I'll track them up for a reason.
I think it's next year, but.
So they give us like about twenty-seven thousand a year or something?
Mm-hmm.
And.
Twenty-two thousand a year.
Yeah.
But that's, that's for, I mean, but that's part of the, I guess, is what J S U's, they pay, I mean, it's paying for their portion of the square feet and heating and air and, and I guess also cleaning.
And our, our. That's what I'm saying, I mean, they're paying, they're paying for it, so whoever they lease it to, it sort of falls back on us, but I, I, I see what you're saying too. If the county, I mean, if, if they don't renew their contract, I think the county could market this thing better for the locals. Because right now, when we try to do something, it always seems like the money goes, would go to Jack's State. I mean, we're, we're, we're sort of in a rock that we can't really lease it, and it's pretty expensive to lease this thing. What is it, I don't know.
I did, it depends on the weekend or what time, I think.
Twenty-four hundred dollars.
Yeah.
But, um, anyways, I just want to give y'all heads up, I, and, and I'm a part of that group. But I, I mean, being chairman, I don't, I just want to give you a heads up and I'll stay out of all the business, but, uh, Cody is the, uh.
Officer.
Yeah. And so there'll be people here that's involved with J S U and, you know, with the county and all, and of course to make sure.
You don't talk about, I think, Chris did that.
Yeah. The intention is to keep it, you know, to leave it better than what it was. And I think he wants to get in touch with you, he wants to talk to you, Cody, and I'm just trying to get in touch with you.
Do you want me to just shut up?
I gave, yeah, I said it to him. Oh, I, I explained to him that there was some sewage problems, I think that.
And we've got, uh, I think we've got a touch squared away pretty much, uh, uh, what has happened is, is if you step up there and look, I'll just explain to you, when they did that retaining wall right over there, that retaining wall is about six inches taller than the lead going into the tank, so it's almost like a catch basin. So it wouldn't be anything wrong with our system the other day when, when, you know, when everybody was calling, other than, uh, the system really doesn't take plumbing and stuff as much. And we got places for these things to go, but each time we come out, it's just been, that's what's clogging up the filter. But, uh, one of the things it is, those tanks, they suck. And, uh, on this side, where it comes, where it comes down to your pipe, really the sewer that's going into the first tank, the water just running into, uh, uh, static pressure, because the pipe is about three inches under the water. And, and because this end, and this pipe here, when this pipe settles more than this pipe, it pushed it up, so there's, they were going to come and, uh, we're going to try to heat that pipe without having to dig all that up and just let it sag down, is what the guy I was talking about, just, and, and Lee was over there, he was good enough to come over, go get it fixed, and we're going to sort of, all of these, if we drop it down about three inches and all the water and stuff would run out of that pipe and drop down, but right now it's just sort of going down on that, into that fluid and everything is just sitting on top of the water. So I think that's one of the reasons why the pipe coming into the building stops, but our system's running great, I mean, it's working now. But, uh, what we're going to do is take off a block or two of that retaining wall. Uh, we're not going to go quite as far as man Lee talked about, we're just going to go, once we get past the, the radius coming back this way, the radius coming back this way, we're going to take about twenty feet to remove some of those blocks and then move, take those edges down and bore the dirt down about ten inches. Then when the water comes raining off in there, instead of going down in our tanks, it'll just run off the wall, off the backside of that wall, so we get it back to coast. But right now you've got like a catch basin and all that rainwater is going in our system. So, uh, I think we spent, uh, we spent about close to seventy-five hundred dollars, eight thousand dollars, but we thought we were going to spend a lot more now. What we're talking down is me and Brett and, uh, Terry's room, just including in house. So other than the pipe, where we might find that spending, uh, was that something Brett, uh, Terry Watts company?
Um, Watts, who's Watts Systems?
Yeah, Watts Systems, so they, they, they're going to do that part, so we might not depend to do fifteen or some hundred dollars towards them or whatever that winds up being. And then we'll take, and we're going to bring all that off ourselves and then we'll probably have to order, uh, probably a pallet, a half, two, might we just get two pallets of solid, re-sign that? And we get to order that to the mailers, so. There's probably going to be some little areas in our, our budget that's going to have to be adjusted with all this sewer system stuff we've got going on.
Yeah, I remember that idea, how many, please, I would.
Go to T N C circuit.
I don't know.
How many services per week?
One, one, one morning.
That's all.
Yeah, on Sunday, right, right now.
I think that, do you, that place they have up there in front of the, right there in town, did they shut it down?
It, it belonged to my wife and, you know, during COVID, when we were doing it then, our numbers got so low, then we started making it in our house and we were drawing people at the house and we were there. So we, we actually sold that building, we actually sold her, sold it to them, so.
But they're going to, you don't take it, is it going to be a church or is it going to be a business?
It's a business, they already have a business in there.
I don't even pay attention.
One apartment, isn't it?
Who is it?
Is it all for them?
No, no, sorry, Simon, uh.
Oh, okay.
It's.
I saw those homes, but, 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 well, it used to be a restaurant a long time ago.
I'm Sandy, um, without.
Yeah, Sandy, I saw, she's got the, um.
Well, it's a little gift shop, so.
Thank you.
Same thing.
But we don't need the sewer system unsupervised, do we?
No, I think, and I think that's why he wouldn't be, I, I let him know that, that there had been sewage problem, and so.
Well, like I said, that system, as far as the system goes, the system is working now, the first time it's ever worked like it should. The only thing of it is that we just got to tweak that pipe going into it because that's, that's, that's static maybe pressure and that water runs out. What he said is, is that water, when it comes up in that pipe, it's supposed to drop three inches. And when you take that lid off and see all that stuff floating around, well, what happens is it just, if it's blocked going on in this building, it don't let it run out in and drop down. It starts backing back up in the building, but I'm just letting everybody know that it really wasn't, the system wasn't working properly. We go, when it, when the alarm went off over there, it caused all the rainwater went down and filled the system up. That thing comes on every hour and, and, and then it runs for about thirty minutes and then it shuts off. So what happens is it goes down, we got four thousand square feet of heads down there in the woods. So when it, when it charges that line, like the thirty-minute run, it shuts off. And see, what happens is that water circulates all the way back to that first tank, which makes the whole system work, so it's, it's sort of pushing back thirty minutes and then it's on the timer. When it turns off, it, 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 the alarm, the alarmer will own, is supposed to pay attention to it. But then once, uh, then what happens, it will slow every hour, it'll take another thirty minutes and finally it'll get down that, that alarmer will walk.
Well, you don't want to work on it.
Well, we might work on this after here next week.
Whatever's moving out, that'll work.
I'm going to hear, well, really, that's not terrible, we're talking about Brett, it's really Terry as far as coming out and getting down, digging down. I'm through with one of the black folks, he won't come to you.
Yeah, we'll have fun.
Yeah, it won't take long to do it, I just, I'd almost rather have, uh, Lee come in, but I think we don't want to get that tank doing.
I don't, you know.
Will that Terry, will that Terry?
Well, I'm glad for more, so.
It is. But we're hoping we can sort of heat it up on the outside and then reach down on the inside, heat it just enough to get it to go down. I was concerned that it might blow up the way it smelled. But we'll concentrate on that then next week.
Something probably already happened.
Huh?
We'll get it pumped before we do that.
Yeah.
Small.
Well, then we're going to have our cafeteria and see if we're, I don't have to go to Atlanta this week, so if we can do it Thursday, I can clear Thursday. I'll Terry, and then, what's the guy's name, they, uh?
Scott.
Scott, yeah, and get Scott, Scott said he's flexible, so if you can get it pumped, then we'll try to make it happen Thursday.
On Thursday, you got nine to ten in the morning.
That's right, that's really my, 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 I shouldn't do that.
Yes, sir.
Can I get somebody to email me a copy of the J S U contract?
Yeah, um, you have that?
I have never seen it, I'll find out what it says.
Yeah, we got a copy.
We'll try to.
I haven't seen the copy of someone, because I never really get, you know, because I was going to my, my first year in the office. And we all sing, because I know we.
Tell you that tomorrow, because it's been months gone and she'll probably know where to go.
Yes, sir.
I've, I've been quitted with some folks about, I was clearly using someone's federal money for animal control in the county.
You talking about the save, I mean, a restoration, ARPA?
ARPA money?
Yeah, America.
Yeah, the art. I was like, ask y'all to think like this, you know, if we can get it approved, what would we do, what, what could we do?
I talked to Billy about that one time, he used to be the dog catcher for the city of Happy. And I was thinking, at that time, now we really don't have any inmates whatsoever that we can use, was to put up a building over there to, over on the property that we own by the jail. So we could sort of have inmates to sort of, you know, do the cleaning and, and then, but now you got to have a reservoir, uh, you got to have a concrete slab where it washes off into a drainage system, uh, I mean.
And on the street, the Bible one C, and on the street on Lail is that our, um, a county, um, that's the reason Randolph County has a, they have a group of people that has opened up a shelter there, so Bible one C, nice, it's real nice, I've been down there. And, uh, and I really, I, I'm begging somebody to, you know, these animal lovers to think about and do that, opening it up, finding a building for them to open it up, it could be a good one. And what you do, you reach out to some of your vets and get them to volunteer some hours. That's how they do it in Randolph County. And they, the commission just actually gives money to Randolph County, uh, because of survival of the Bible one C. They just contribute some money to it, but it keeps their hands off of it, so, you know, they're not. The Bible one C can operate a lot easier than we could and it's very costly, because I, over in Harrison County, I went and talked with them up there, um, and they said, you could, you probably won't spell that one.
Well, even if we could, if we could only provide a building for the nonprofit, you know, with this money, if, anything that we could do would take.
Well, we got a building, I mean, I, I just, we have a little bit more than the one down there.
That would be willing to run it under a Bible one C.
If you get the right people involved, you, I think you'd succeed.
And there's a lot of people on there, I know the, um, she's, well, Jackson, Gatsis, don't you, with Gatsis, I talked to her. Our vice commissioner's made, and she's willing, but it's going to take more than her, it is going to take other people.
There are some grants available too. I, I looked to see if there were any grants available for animal shelters, and almost all of them have to be obtained by a Bible one C agreement. But, um, there are a number of them out there. I have a daughter that works for A S P C A and she was, she was telling me they did, and they're not, none of them are very big, but they do offer grants that you can apply for, so that might be something.
Randolph County, they, they put their new animals down, they had a great success rate of adopting a lion. They should have lived with it, but they've been very successful with it.
If we could get the City of Heaven involved on Ramler, City of Heaven involved, County of Alabama, and even, we talked earlier about, uh, partnering with another county, you know? At least we'd be doing something besides this, and people complain.
You know, Birmingham will take, our vice, uh, committee, our vice, uh, meeting we went to, I spoke with a gentleman that's, uh, who's known for Birmingham. And he can, they don't take our animals, if we walk them too, you know, but that would take them, because they adopt a lion everywhere.
How much per animal? How much per animal?
He did, but I, we just got in a small conversation, you know, about.
I think Randolph, I think at one time too, I think the county would take them, but, um.
He did all those, count home, count, he told me.
Yeah, it was given to the, uh, and then what, what the City of Heaven was sort of doing with that, and then what happened was the county got to dropping all their dogs off at the City Hall and, uh.
Or the trust stop.
Or the trust stop, and then we'd get it all in, but so we've got, I don't know, it, it, it was a good idea to start with, but we can clean up all the stuff inside the city and also it's like to bring them all down.
It, we've got to do something, because it's not getting better, it's getting worse. We've got, you know, nobody, they want families, but they don't, they don't take care of the animals, they don't want to have to spend it, you know?
That's really good, so we're, I'm working on it.
All right.
I gave that one more phone line.
Yes, sir.
I've been talking with Tracy, uh, they just applied, Tracy and I just applied for a new truck and they've got it through, and the hospital is, of course, picking up that cost, but, um.
Hospital board, isn't it?
And he approached me on some of this ARPA money, if, if we could possibly get them to be able to, they love this. And, and I wish Crystal was here, because she knows more about this piece of equipment. But it's to go on that new truck, where that truck would be a first responder truck and it could be housed at one of the, um, paradiets. You've got, of course, there's three in Miami, but, you know, there's, I don't know if they've got it on the south end, but the thing is making this truck where they've got another piece of equipment to get two people, but they, it's a total of fifty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents for these two pieces of equipment. Now, like I said, the hospital board did, uh, have me with the truck, they just.
Well, on this equipment, what are you going to have to get to the?
It's the piece of equipment, it's like the Carter Act, uh, it's the Carter Act, uh, equipment, it's, uh.
So it has to be treated quick?
Yes, yes.
Okay, not that, I thought you called it something.
No, no, they can't, they cannot transport them in this vehicle. All they can do is monitor and hook them up to the monitoring system to be able to feed into the hospital board to be able to, to work on that patient, you know? It's just giving a quicker response for our people.
So he's asking that we use American rest.
He's asking if we can use any of the ARPA money for that. But then, then also, Crystal and I was talking, that they haven't ruled out the, the money, the money being used for turnout gears either. They haven't totally ruled that out, Crystal's still working on.
American rest, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
That would possibly use some of that money for those turnout gears and leads.
Okay, so are you asking to add something to the agenda?
As, as to, I've had Tracy come and explain this to everybody better and then, you know, and also that Crystal explains that's the possible.
So you, you just want to kind of give us the. So you just want, you just want to kind of give us the location to hit it? Tracy's got this and think about it.
You know, ask Tracy to come and tell us a little more about it. Um, and also that Crystal gets involved and explains about the turnout here. If we could use that money to make our guys safer going into these homes, you know, we should do it.
Okay.
Well, what happened with the grant, for the turnout?
For that's not.
Okay, now you didn't realize turnout gear is got expiration dates?
Yes.
And I know, I'm fire station in my district, don't need, because I'm a top of all of them.
But see, I've, I've got, now the board's spraying does it, but I didn't know that, what, there must be, I know several lines does. And I think, um, I don't know, how many, hey, one has.
Hey, I talked to them, they seemed like they were really, you know, the sort of.
My, my part of the park is young.
Well, you need to know, or I don't have to need to know.
How many? And that, that would be a problem.
And, and far as.
Because of their needs now.
The hospital board at least take care of that.
Well, the hospital.
Hospital board wastes more money than they use for split stuff.
But you know, they first gave the, um, fire station the new, uh, monitor, I mean, the new, uh, quarter machine.
Yeah, but you know, the well side, they, they don't have money to give our organization, folks, American, five thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars. Money to the hospital board.
I'm just, I feel that way. The hospital board, maybe they're, maybe that was the hospital board, maybe that was not.
Are you thinking that Tracy can speak? Okay, now if you're contacting, Jerry, Jerry's gonna be, he is co-chairing it.
Just putting on the.
He'll be on the agenda.
Swine.
This is Tracy.
Tracy, uh, what this equipment is, uh.
And Emily, I know that, uh, I guess she's at R, that, uh, nursing home, you know, that they're using higher, uh, insurance here at the county. So is that money pretty slow to steal or are they doing it the way that's what we feel like? Not the guy that's in trouble, but it wants to hold.
Yeah, I think they're okay. She's, she's injured. Something about it, she didn't say any problems or anything.
Okay. I should come up with something when my day is set down and she's having, you know, the, the, so she would understand it. The turnover ran over there, I mean, it's like every time I'm over there, there's even, there's even blowings every day.
All right, anything else y'all want to put on the agenda? The change, Scott? So we're here. Okay. Briefly tell me what we got. I'm ready for everyone.
Okay, I have, on the consent agenda, I have sheriff's department surplus vehicles, seizures, um, the ethics meeting that we talked about, Emily Brown, and then finding out who else wants to get her that.
That's only one reservation for her.
Yes. And then the engineer, Syngdale.
He's trapped.
Right, and then, um, the IBM solution PO that's over ten thousand dollars and I have had permission for that. And then, um, budget changes for the nine-one-one generator strike. And then on the radio agenda, uh, Ms. Brand in Morris District, and then Tracy Leibler.
Okay. Everybody good, good with that? I'm just trying to, y'all can't think of anything else, so make sure we go. We're just trying to keep any surprises from popping up.
I lost one of the eleven thousand dollars, Maran. And what if I got it from her? We got eleven thousand dollars, but it's not in her budget. Why is it not in her budget that she used it?
She didn't know she was gonna get it.
Oh, she hadn't already got it?
No, it's, she has got it, but she didn't know that she was gonna have it apparently.
How do you put it, how, how do y'all put it in the budget?
I think there were three funds from the money that she used for the, uh, when she was doing all those, all that. It's because she used her budget somewhere in another. And is she a big person? Or was it grand?
I think it was a reserve, I think it was a grant. I just don't understand the process of, if we get a grant, then how do you get it to the department and the department's budget?
It goes into the general fund and then, um, the sparks into, goes into the general fund. So it's stuck in there and it has to.
Until you move it to a.
So we need a resolution that moves the money from the general fund to her.
Right.
You know.
It's not a sealed.
She's not really spent four thousand or what, so much of it.
Right, forty, forty-one hundred of it, she's got about sixty-eight left.
But how does she spend it? How does she spend it?
She has to come back, especially maybe over sixty, spend it.
She has, and she has money in her account, so it's not like the money's not there, it's just a matter of, she uses that on her budget.
So the resolution's gonna go on next week, it's not moving money from one line out to another line out. This moving money from the general fund to her.
That would be my take on it.
Because it may, I'll make the end of the general fund.
I think, I'll say which account it went into. And, um, D and X, remember, I saw, I saw it on, I saw it on email today, but I'm not sure if it went into the nine-one-one account or if it went to the, uh, general fund account. It may just be already in the nine-one-one account and she's just asking to be able to use it for this item. But I'll, I'll find out.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
So you don't, how much money is in her reserve? Just about two hundred fifty thousand?
It's more, yes, more.
Three hundred?
Something like that.
Well, I think that's why.
That's money needs to be screened. It's, it's losing may every day within the place and stuff. Two hundred fifty thousand, not last year, anything. Uh. I mean, I, I, I'm confused, we don't find out that, where the money is. I mean, with, with, general fund or went to her, I mean, I thought it had something to do with the funds.
It was a reimbursement for some, some fund that they.
But it's money from the general fund, you gotta get it out of the general fund, you gotta get it in the herd fund before she gets it in. And that's what I, I asked her the question, you know, are we moving line items or are we moving money into her fund? And what it meant to it was line items, but I never misunderstood it, so.
I'll get, I'll get careful.
I didn't know it was coming out of that money, that's great, I, I remember the appropriation money that she had, the money she's got in reserve. I didn't know that it was coming out of there, it was hidden there, or it's coming out of general fund, or it's coming out of, we're just, I, 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 I.
Yeah, we'll find out, I mean, oh, listen.
The project she was having a budget, but she didn't know that she was getting that now that's superior to the general fund. And now for her to be able to use it, it's gotta be moved into her funds.
But all this equipment she's asking for.
That is how.
Needs to come out of the three hundred thousand, wherever it's set, nowhere that we need to do something.
Mark, Mark Cruz has to be on the agenda to talk about basic testing. And I think that concludes everything, that's all the things.
I think we're enough.
Got a lot of red thing to cut off and put them in that pot.
Anybody have an idea of, okay, JSC pays us twenty-two thousand and they pay a percentage according to the square feet of electric, water, sewer and all that stuff, does anybody have a ballpark here?
We got that, we got that paid up one time. And it was really more than what I thought it was. When we got the, when Hannah and I got the payment, it was more than we think, really, uh, but each month you get each mark out and the story takes it or show.
I mean, I understand that worked, but I just haven't never seen the contract also. It was already signed and all, where I got it. If we don't really need it fixed here, uh, so we'll have to look at it.
Well, on the front end of this thing, I think they, uh, they, uh, they give two hundred fifty thousand, Brian. Uh, we got two hundred fifty thousand while we're working on it from Jacksonville on, we went to the construction of this building.
Not two hundred fifty thousand, we got a million.
A million?
Yeah, this was two million. Two million this side, twenty million, I mean, no, it was, a million this side, two billion that side, that's right.
But we didn't get all of that from Jack's estate.
It was through a grant.
Yeah.
That was for Jackson estate, they were gonna, that's, we combined this.
See, I think, I think it was a big fight because that's where we used the money on the fourth.
Yeah, they was gonna take the money. It was supposed to be combined with the, the US forestry down at two eighty-one, but the US forestry used that whole footprint and, uh, the federal government wouldn't allow any more footprint to be taken up. So that grant, the eight dollar grant to JSC was going to go, go for clothing. And that's why we got involved and stopped that to keep it even. Of course, you know, it became, you know, political and we had this different agreements on that, but, um.
I think you'll lock it up next time, I think it's a dental first.
Yeah, so.
Is there, I wonder if there's a way you can add stuff like, like they gotta pay fines, they gotta pay restitution or something. Can we add that to the restitution?
Let me get, then ask, I guess I can't return it.
Well, see, a lot of times, back when we had to work for these, and they were working, uh, a lot of that money went to anything, not get restitution or fines or, but now we don't have that anymore.
Do you know how that, because it used to, a long time ago, if you get, we paid fifty dollars to get a tooth pool. You didn't get any dent stuff, you just got a tooth pool and fifty dollars.
That's always still good.
Yeah, that's always good for teeth.
So what's that?
This is bigger than forty-six dollars.
You know, it's, was that one of the teeth or person?
I usually go one more time. It's that, it's got one person's name on it, I would say. But you have, you got the two hundred dollars, well, do you?
Oh, it does?
Oh, yeah.
The cops is coming up, it used to be like fifty bucks if we had a deal going.
Yeah, we managed to track it, it happened something, they stopped that. There was a mobile, demo, plan, warrant, it was all for the record. Hey, but if that's something, maybe we can get some kind of local contract or more or less, that's what happens out of it.
I, it sounds like the brain child of years to lane, I bet lane could get something else.
Yeah, it's, uh. Yeah, overall, we got very few demo, on the nurse, says some merchants, and they go, we have to take them, I mean, you know. I think that's so bad it's too rare. But now, it's, that means they, it probably could be added to court costs, you know, restitution, but it's kind of getting below the term. Really weird, I one time, I got tried to, we couldn't come with this money, we spent, we went out there and I don't remember. Like it was a different attorney and I don't know that we got anything.
Yeah, it might be something basic money out.
You want me to do that?
I'm pretty keen we can get it like a hotel today, but it's like ten days, you can pay yours for it all, it's ten dollars a night.
I don't think I've ever get out of jail, I've been in there.